All right. Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Acheson County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, November 25th. Like to call the meeting to order and will our county clerk provide rule call please?
Commissioner Quinn.
Present.
Commissioner Noel.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Thank you. All right, if you please stand and welcome Pastor Jim Cormod from the Cummings Christian Church for our invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
As we come together, this being Thanksgiving week and a couple of days Thanksgiving Day itself. I want to direct your attention and maybe this is more for you personally than as county commissioners corporate together. But in Deuteronomy, the eighth chapter, Moses said these words. For the Lord your God is bringing you into a good land, a land of brooks of water, of fountains and springs flowing out of the valleys and hills. A land of wheat and barley, of vines and fig trees and pomegranates, a land of olive trees and honey. A land in which you will eat bread without scarcity, in which you will lack nothing, a land whose stones are ironed and out of whose hills you can dig copper. And you shall eat and be full, and you shall bless the Lord your God for the good land he has given you. Praise the Lord for what he's given to us. As I read this passage, I was reminded of 60 years ago, the movie Shenandoah. Where James Stewart played a character Charlie Anderson and Charlie prayed a Thanksgiving prayer. He was a grumpy man. We cleared the land, we planted the crops, we harvested the crops. We worked dog bone hard and we hadn't have done it, it wouldn't been here, but thank you anyway, Lord. Moses calls us to a much better level than that and let's praise the Lord. Thank you, Father, for providing for us the things that we need and thank you, Father, for the county commissioners and as they lead and care for our county. I pray, Father, that together your name will be blessed, that your name will be honored because of the good place and the good time that you've given us. And I pray, Father, that we can continue to manage it and to make it good for you and a blessing in your name in this place. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance through the side of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, and next is public comment. Seeing none. Approval of the agenda. I have two items to add to our agenda. There's an electronic signature for KDHE 2411 Pacific Street. And then waiting on a copy, but the updated municipality agreement for EMS. So with those two additions, I would look for a motion to approve this week's agenda.
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. All right, on our consent agenda this week, we have commission meeting minutes from October 28th. And then we will do the November 18th next week. And then the Finance Director Review. There's no payroll this week. Expense review, total accounts payable for Wednesday, November 26th. Eighty-nine thousand, one eighty-two oh one. Credit cards of one thousand ninety-four eighty-seven. There are no negative cash balances. On this AP run. So with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. All right, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Campbell.
Well, I attended EDAG, which is our Economic Development Advisory Group with the city local folks and it was a productive meeting. I took part in the Care Radio Turkey Bowl and not bragging, but the county are the reigning champs this year going forward, so. Kudos to us and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Noel.
I don't really have anything, but I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving vacation, time off, time with family, friends. Be careful and see you back next week.
Thank you. I had, last night I attended the Center Township Meeting and so that was really good to be able to visit with their board and get feedback and share some updates from the county. And then I also attended the Farm Bureau Meeting last night. Because last week I was asked by Kansas Farm Bureau Director of Political Affairs. He reached out to me and asked me if I would be a speaker at a workshop on a panel discussion on December 7th for their annual convention in Manhattan. And so I committed to do that on behalf of Acheson County, but wanted to let the local, our local board know that I will be doing that and what the topic and have the conversation. So it worked out great. When I called Wade, they had a meeting last night, so I popped in and was able to visit with them about that and then also update them on things that we've been working on here at the table, so. Yeah, it was good, so. That's all I have and there's no petitions or proclamations. We have. We had contracted with KDHE to help us with 2411 Pacific Street and they have sent over the final document electronic. Our county counselor has reviewed it and gave the go ahead that this is just what we've already approved basically previously. So I will adopt and sign that during our meeting, just so we have that on here. That is done and submitted back to Toby at KDHE. We have EMS municipality agreement, waiting, the attachment wasn't there. So when we get that, we can also adopt that. Care Radio, we need to walk away today with a recording for them for their first Friday. Which actually will be ahead of the game because we would have the second, but it's probably better just to not get out if we have updates that we want to record and get it to them because last month with the election, we missed the first Friday update, so. Project Concern MOU, no update on your meetings?
Oh, I just sent Jeff an email asking when the next meeting will be, so.
All right, and so then we have the resolution for the EMS one cent sales tax. We reviewed it last week. And have it on here for consideration of adoption. Through reading it and soliciting feedback, the only thing that I would like to bring up is, Pat, would it be okay to put in the question itself? Shall Acheson County, Kansas be authorized to impose a 1% countywide retailer's sales tax before countywide? Can we put the word dedicated? Because it's dedicated to EMS and then that way, for anyone wondering where the dollars will go.
Yeah. Let me get the language up there. It doesn't say right after that with the proceeds.
With all revenue to be derived there from, to be retained by the county and the revenues there from, to be exclusively for financing countywide EMS. I guess just the feedback, I, with the word dedicated, it gives people ease when they read it, that they know, okay, this is.
Have the word dedicated before 1%.
Impose a dedicated 1%. Yeah, that would be fine.
I think they are familiar with that term, so it, it's there. Maybe redundant, but it's, it's there.
Was there anything else you guys?
Well, just so the wording around the actual ballot. Are we going to use that as, that whole resolution? Are we going to use that kind of as a document that we're going to hand out to the folks that are going to be helping us with this? Is that document itself going to be something that we're going to use?
So you mean for like flyers and things like that?
Well, like if we ask the hospital, always the college. Or, you know, we're going to have to present them with some kind of
Yep, so.
Information. What I was getting at, if that's the case, we, you know, we can't fluff up or change the wording on that, but I feel like we need to be very, very specific as to what our goal is on the front end. Because we can only say so much in the, the actual ballot, right? But, but we can explain that it's for property tax relief. And the kind of, would we have Corey here last week and we were talking about how to present it?
Yeah.
That wording, we would thought we would put in property tax relief. We also thought we would put in.
Equitable funding.
Right, equitable funding versus just solely property tax funding. Just those kind of things, just, you know, and it may not be necessary to do that right now, but I'm just saying that's, if we're going to use that as a template. You know, those are some of the words, some of the words that we need to put out there because I think people need to get the whole picture. You know, when they're, for some it'll be enough that we're going to fund EMS, right? EMS is important, but also on the other side, you're going to have folks saying, well, okay, how exactly is a one cent sales tax different than taking it from my, you know, increasing my property? And so I think we just need to be very specific and explain, okay, this is how it's better. This is how one cent sales tax for this particular use is going to benefit it. It's actually.
Last week we talked about, we could, like in August, we could show them at that time, at that point in time, we'll have a good idea of what our budget will look like and we can show them, this is the budget as, as it has been, as it would be with ad valorem taxes. And if we shift the EMS portion over to sales tax, this is what the budget would look like. Now, that's going to be hard to do if you're going to want to put out material now, but I guess we could go back and show what our budget, current budget would look like. And do the same thing with that retroactively and it's like, this is what the mills would have been if we would at the last minute been able to have a one cent sales tax.
Or, to your point, use what we ended up with and then add the sales tax to that. And that could, because that's what, that's basically what we would have had in '26 with our reductions. If you also had the sales tax.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If you would, well, you would have subtracted from, from our current budget, you know, the, the, that portion of
Sure.
Taxes that are supplying or funding EMS. So, you know, I got thinking about what we said, we, we know it was close, we'll have the actual budget for next year, but I think for you know, sales or to sell it, to show what, we're going to have to use our current year as, as kind of a template of, of what it would be because we don't want to wait till August before we're showing people what this is going to look like.
Well, and, and see what I like about that is that, think about, think about if we'd have been able to reduce to get back to a baseline like we did, but also then have January 1st, if we had a one cent sales tax coming. So imagine what that would look like right now, if you had your deduction, which, which we did. And then January 1st, if, if here comes this sales tax, I mean, I don't want to use, yeah. But I, I just think that, that would have been an eye opener, I think, for most folks, but yeah, you're right. You'd pretty much have to go back and use some of that, some 2025 information.
So Pat, this resolution that you're adding the dedicated term to, this is just authorizing us to put it on next August. And then as far as what we're communicating about educational pieces, we can create those with the data to show people.
Right.
Okay.
And, and as I'm looking at it here, I think there's one other change that maybe where it says retained by the county, I think maybe I should say retained by Acheson County.
Yeah.
I don't know that there's really any ambiguity about it, but it's a maybe slightly clearer.
Yeah.
Instead of retained by the county.
Yep.
So are you considering adopting it now? Do you want to reprint it or do you want to get it circulated by email?
We have the time, I think we should go ahead.
Yeah, and did we need to add dedicated up on the bold? At all as well, where levying a dedicated countywide retailer's sales tax? And then we can circulate it and make sure that.
I would go for it because like you, like I said earlier, it might sound redundant, but yet that's the terminology that people are familiar with.
Yeah. I thought that was good feedback because I didn't pick up on that. I mean, you read it and it's all going specifically, but utilizing the word, I think, to your point, there, a familiarization of.
Well, everybody remembers when we had the sales tax, it wasn't dedicated to problems that created and they got used to that because that got hashed over and over and over why that didn't work, so.
We think Mark will be here next Tuesday. I didn't fix the date.
Did you say Pat?
I didn't fix the date. Well, I'll throw the second date to that, it's been burning.
Oh. Looking down and then. Does Pat have the copy of the agreement they're talking about? Does he have referenced, you would do it?
Just the one that you, that you emailed me earlier, the, the one with KDHE?
No, this was on October 13th for EMS. Courtney, it looks like Courtney sent it to you and asked you to review it and approve. And it has some changes in it since the original contract. For a municipality agreement.
Oh. This isn't right. The third, the third paragraph is, the sentence here is not correct.
The A pledging?
Yeah, that's not correct.
I was, I was just reading that. I just, I was trying to get that wording, but maybe it was something legal.
Here's the minutes that we were supposed to sign underneath my packet.
Did you do the stretch?
All right. Okay, so I will read this resolution and then look for a motion for adoption. So a resolution to submit to the qualified electors of Acheson County, Kansas, the proposition of levying a dedicated countywide retailer's sales tax for the purpose of financing county emergency medical services pursuant to KSA 12-187B5 and providing for the calling of the election thereon. Whereas KSA 19-101 and KSA 19-212, the Board of County Commissioners to transact all county business and perform all powers of local legislation deemed appropriate and to make all contracts and do all other acts in relation to the property and concerns of the county necessary to exercise of its corporate or administrative powers. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Acheson County, Kansas, finds it in the best interest of the residents of Acheson County to ensure the continued provision of reliable countywide emergency medical services. And whereas KSA 12-187B5 authorized the Board of County Commissioners to submit to the qualified electors of the county, a proposition to levy a countywide retailer's sales tax and to pledge the revenue therefrom for the purpose of financing healthcare services, including emergency medical services. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Acheson County, Kansas, section one, that there is hereby called an election to be held in Acheson County, Kansas, on August 4th of 2026. For the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the county, the following proposition in a form substantially similar to the following. Shall the following be adopted? Shall Acheson County, Kansas be authorized to impose a dedicated 1% countywide retailer's sales tax with all revenues to be derived therefrom, to be retained by Acheson County and the revenues therefrom be used exclusively for financing countywide emergency medical services, EMS, including rescue operations pursuant to KSA 12-187B5, commencing on January 1st of 2027 and expiring 10 years after commencement. Section two, the county clerk and county election officer shall cause notice, notices to be published of the special question election as provided by law. Section three, the result of the election shall be certified by the county election officer and canvassed by the Board of County Commissioners in the manner provided by law. And section four, if approved by a majority of the electors voting thereon, all revenue derived by the tax shall endure to benefit the Acheson County and all revenues therefrom shall be used exclusively for financing countywide emergency medical services, also known as EMS. And such tax shall be subject to all applicable state laws and administrative rules and regulations of the Kansas Department of Revenue. The services of the Department of Revenue shall be utilized to administer, enforce and collect such, such tax. Section five, that all resolutions, county policies or parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed insofar as they conflict herewith. Be it further resolved, that this resolution shall be effective upon publication in the official county newspaper. I would look for a motion to approve this resolution, adding that sales tax question as read to our primary August 4th election.
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero and was adopted this 25th day of November 2025 by the Board of County Commissioners of Acheson County, Kansas. And the number of this resolution shall be.
Fifteen sixty.
Fifteen sixty?
Yes.
Yep.
One five six zero?
Yes.
Okay. My heart is.
Oh, I want to review and approve for, yeah, I will change it.
All right, so with that being done, one quick question on sales tax. I was asked if it was legal for us to utilize the sales tax to offset the mill levy last year for our 2025 budget? When we certified a lower mill and had to make up the 1.6 million and we use the 897 fund cash? Was that?
You're talking about using from the prior sales tax?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. There's no question. How did any of the overage is there to go to the general fund?
Okay.
And so you could, and for practically any, for any legal purpose would be fine.
Okay. All right. And then the municipal, did you have an opportunity to review that, Pat, for EMS?
You know.
You want to send that over to us?
What was the date of chief's?
On November 4th, I think. You should just send it over there and forward it here.
I printed a copy.
Oh, okay. I showed.
So, yeah, yeah, yes, I did review this.
Yeah, your notes say you reviewed it and it looks fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay, so then on this particular document. The chair would sign the certification. And the agreement shall take effect beginning today. And then the notification contacts will be filled filled in later. Is that?
Can we have a little explanation of what this is, this does? Well, maybe I could just read it to her.
I just ordered.
You've got the time. I haven't seen it come through.
So basically, it looks like it talks about termination, collection fees. Debt submission requirements, account adjustments. Decertification of debt, bankruptcy proceedings.
It's for the the state set off program. We have to certify that where the EMS is a municipality. For their purposes. Okay. And also their. That they'll follow the rules. What I just got was for the legal down. Maybe U C contract. Oh, here's, here it is.
Though the municipality, even though EMS, i- it's still Acheson County, Kansas. It needs for escalations. Okay, so then the last two pages, page three, general contact. Is for the internal state to use for escalations. Would that be Corey?
I would, yeah, I would think.
Okay. Do we know anybody off the top of your head, the address of? Um, just have it.
So each one of the municipalities is gonna get a copy of this to sign and approve? The municipality is the county itself. Oh, I thought they were having an agreement with each of the. This is us, us in the state. Did you get the address?
No.
It's one zero four four three. US fifty nine. US Highway fifty nine. Is this something new? I don't remember ever doing this before. We didn't do it before that goes. I, um, I think June Waring's office had. What, what was entering them for us? So. Okay, yeah, actually, I'm not sure about that because. I don't know whether we've done one before or not. Uh, this is new.
And so public debt questions would probably be Courtney then?
Yeah, yes.
And then fund transfer contact would be Mark. Probably Mark Salton.
Yeah.
You know the county's EIN number?
Forty eight. Dash. Six zero. Two five. Zero four nine.
Okay. Okay. I have it all filled out correctly. Okay, so I would look for a motion to allow the chair to sign, um, the municipal qualification certification. From the State of Kansas Department Administration, um, accounts receivable set off program. I certify that my organization qualifies as a municipality under the definition provided by KSA seventy five dash sixty two oh two H. And the amendments thereto, uh, municipality means any municipality defined by KSA seventy five dash eleven seventeen. And amendments thereto or any community mental health center organized, organized pursuant. To the provisions of KSA nineteen dash four zero zero one. And amendments thereto and license pursuant to KSA thirty nine dash. Two zero zero one and amendments thereto or any mental health clinic organized pursuant to the provisions of KSA sixty five dash. Two eleven and amendments thereto and license pursuant to KSA thirty nine dash two zero zero one. Um, and amendments there too, so.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Alright, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, passes. Three to zero. There's two signature places. One under what I just read and the one at the very back, um, after I added our contacts of. Corey Scott, Courtney Keegan and Mark Silver. Okay. We have the minutes from. Eleven eighteen ready. Um, did you want, this is the annual chamber banquet? Oh, thank you. Yep, you wanna review those and then you. I can call for a motion to adopt those if you guys are. Also, did I spell Joey's name correct? Solid waste. I think it's D Y. That's what I did. Okay. Chamber Commerce. Yeah, the, yeah, Acheson. Area Chamber Annual Banquet. I should. Changes? Yep. Um. Okay, sorry. Ended the meeting on eleven twelve where the budget was adopted. The, the Acheson count, or the Acheson Area Chamber Commerce Annual Banquet will be two seven. Two seven. Oh, okay, cuz the transient desk guest tax was discussed at the other meeting. Yeah, at the, yeah, so even if you just wanna put. I'll just move that up there. Yep, yeah. The annual board meeting or the annual banquet will be. Yep. And Mark's, um. Recommendation to us for the fees for solid waste were based on our costs in our contract. Do we wanna clarify that where it just says the municipal solid waste is set at versus? Like, we didn't set that. We're just, it's the cost of what it takes. I, I don't know if. I just feel like there's people that are gonna read these and they don't. I don't want misinterpretation that we're just pulling rates out and saying, you know, this is the cost of of what it is. So I think maybe clarifying that would be helpful. So where do you want? Uh, so, um, under new business and. The fourth line down or third line down, it says municipal solid waste. Municipal solid waste. Cost. Uh, or, um. Those are the charges that you're making, right? Right, but it's just the, uh. The cost of what like we pay is just being. The county pays? Yeah. For recycling and my understanding is that's the cost in our contract or trashing.
According to Stacy.
Yeah. Okay, so municipal solid waste cost to the county is. Yeah. Fifty seventeen a ton for. Yes, and recycling. Recycling is. One oh three, what you have? One oh three a ton and construction is. Will be set, yeah, is set at, cuz we do set that. Okay, will be set. At fifty a ton, I'll have to. January first? Yeah. Okay. What's the last township that, um? Well, when I have that? We hadn't heard from Benton or Capioma or Center at that moment.
Where is Center me?
Uh, at Colin Shealy's house? Okay, you guys. Good with that and we'll print one more copy and then. I'll call for a motion again.
He's still in.
Yeah. No, you're fine.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys. Mm-hmm, thank you. Worked out. Okay, thank you. Top review of the minutes from November eighteenth. I would look for a motion to approve as written.
So. Second.
Move and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Three to zero. Our next meeting. Alright, so we have. You had reached out to project. you had reached out to project concern on your meeting and update on them.
Yes, I haven't heard anything back. I just sent that this morning.
Okay, um care radio recording, do we wanna talk about a topic or do we wanna do that? Record it. We can just record that in workshop before we leave. If you guys are good with that.
Yep.
That way it's done, sent um. We have an HR workshop at one o'clock. I was gonna ask you guys on, we had thrown out some ideas on social media to get a more of a following to the Atchison County page. Um. I think it would be worthwhile having a workshop on that and asking maybe Jill from the chamber. I I was telling her what the goal is to get more visibility on, you know, the one page. And she explained that there's a way that we can link the pages together, so if say emergency management posts something at two AM, the county page will automatically pick it up and and share it um based on permissions, so that it's not a manual thing. It would be more efficient cause you could link your sheriff, your county attorney, your treasurer. You know, your emergency management, your road and bridge, everybody has their separate pages. And it could automatically, when they put out information, go to the counties for information, so be more automated, efficient, and we wouldn't have to like and and same register of deeds has a page, um we wouldn't miss something, right? Like it would just kind of be, so I think it'd be worth listening to and understanding that I I'm not an expert on Facebook by any means, so.
But devil's advocate, just thinking of of that, i- is wasn't there a reason that we only had a specific amount of people that were qualified to put information on there? Is that kind of a roundabout way? I mean that, I mean if they're doing something individually, but then it's getting picked up, is that? Um.
So I think that'd be wonderful for the workshop, just to have an impression.
Yeah, I mean, that's my first initial question.
Go with, you know, and and having all the folks that have have the pages like sit sit down together and say, all right, how do we get our, because the goal here, right, is streamline information and make sure the public is aware. That's that's the goal, is getting information to the public, so.
Do we have administrator?
Um, Mark. Uh, yeah, and I believe Connie maybe as well. Um, so. Um, just something to put on the radar maybe would be worthwhile, especially as we're in December, you know, kinda housekeeping things before the first of the year to try to get get better, especially if we're talking about getting information out for, you know, the upcoming ballot question, just how do we get information out to the public, so? Um, just throwing that out there. Um. Do you guys have any other things that we need to add for next week? That's twelve two next week, okay, and then we need to make sure that we know there's no meeting on the ninth. Um. So we can put that out to the public that we will not be meeting on the ninth and our department has if they need something. Um. They'll let us know next week or the sixteenth. That's something else that what were we just saying this morning that we needed to put on Mr. Campbell's radar when he went to KAC? I thought there was something.
Hmm, yeah, you were discussing it.
I can't. I can't remember what it was now.
Hmm.
Have you got the agenda, what what's being talked about at that?
I read through it, I don't remember exactly everything, but I did read through the different
Looks helpful.
Workshops and things and uh uh probably a third to two thirds, I mean, you know, yeah, yeah, it looks like it's relevant to us and be some good information.
Nice.
Okay, uh, has there been much publication of these uh NRP workshop on the eleventh?
So we have emailed everyone, um but no, we need to do better probably making phone calls or um and that, I'm glad you brought that up. Because also for housekeeping, like when I went to Center Township last night, um great discussion, right? They they understand that there needs to be more parameters put in place. They were all in favor of the cap and different things um. But how we want that to go, right? Because you're gonna have a a room full of a lot of people. And it would almost be beneficial if everyone came with their minds kind of where they land, and then we could just go around the room as as each group to say, okay, what what do you guys feel? Like if they had the opportunity to meet together to know like where do you land, like? So that you don't have twenty-one opinions that, cause we wanna try to make it fruitful, right, like?
By chance, will there be any, have you, and I don't know if you have this information, but will there be any township meetings between now and the eleventh, if we wanted to, we could go we could go speak to them
Yeah.
in person, do you have any?
Um, I sent that list of dates, but I'll double check on that, but that's, I'm glad you brought that up, cause that was something Center Township said that they would find helpful if we could um if they could see the annual reports from the NRP of what they're putting in, um so that they know that and then um some examples of projects that were successful and um just in brainstorming, they were like that five hundred mark for a cap.
Um, for business?
Just, yeah, for for all of, for all of them.
So that that's another question. In my conversation with Holly this morning was for them, okay, administering this program. So right now we have, you know, just the two lines, makes it simple, you've got the 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 one um uh cap. But realistically though, I asked could you know, could you guys do it with two caps? You know, could you do it with a residential and a higher for business? And, you know, it it is gonna be tougher anytime you add more
Mm-hmm.
information, but um I'm thinking ahead. You know? How the city, how the four oh nine district is gonna look at it. And you wanna compromise, so if we can if we can work it out so that they can still administer it and it's not too big of a hassle, uh possibly doing two different caps, you know, one for business industrial versus one for um residential, just to me, that just makes sense, you 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 know resident, you know, business is gonna be higher. It the the cost, and so it would make sense you would have two. I'm not for no cap at all, I think there needs to be a cap, I think that's probably gonna be a popular sentiment um amongst taxpayers, you know, uh. So I I think that's why I wanna, I would like to go to some of these meetings
Yeah.
and actually get input from them.
Yes.
Before before the eleventh. Possible.
Real quick question to what you're saying, so if you had residential at one cap and commercial?
It'd be target, non-target.
So you'd have four of four tiers basically?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanna reiterate what you said to make sure I understood. And
That meeting is at uh now Conference Center?
Yes. Yeah, Memorial Hall had um youth sports, so Mark Westhoff got the Conference Center for us.
Wait, you're suggesting four tiers at what? Send that to me again.
So uh what I'm saying is, so you can't just have the the one that we've set, the three hundred for both, I think you need to have a higher one for commercial.
So you type residential?
You'd have residential, non-target, target, and you'd have uh uh industrial, business slash industrial, and
Commercial?
Target, non-target, it would I, like, for instance, three hundred, five hundred, that's that's just a it's just a number, uh but but for instance, that's how it would look.
Okay.
And we'd want input from Holly to see if if that's gonna be open or not, or if that's gonna that's doable.
Um, that's probably a good idea that we could maybe divide and conquer um reaching out to these folks, cause yes, I sent the email, but like I also had a phone call with Jiquita Peak from here in, cause she doesn't check her email very often, so she put it on her calendar, she'll be there. Um, sent at the Center Township last night, even though they got the email, had some questions like, now where is it, you know, and so just reiterating to people and reminding them um.
Where is the meeting?
At the Atchison Event Center. Okay. Um. Do you guys have any other things that we need to do before adjourning to workshop? I don't really have anything. Okay.
I don't think we would.
Yep, no, take your time. I can look back through my email to make sure we didn't.
Do you know if we have an update on on Code Red?
Just what James sent us was the last I've seen.
Um. Do do you have to know what the alternative is to the to communicating anything? Is there, is there an alternative? Does it just, does it now just come back to the county website? For any kind of notifications?
I mean, I think we continue to put information out in, you know, the website and social media all we can. Um, I, what, if I remember what I read right, um Code Red themselves were trying to transition to a new platform that would keep, you know, kind of making it urgent to to get it up and running. Um, I know there's other platforms, but I haven't, I mean, I that would be, I'd have to ask James if he's looked into them.
We could, I guess we need to reach out to James because I know you know, he he sent out the initial uh email, but I'm just curious, since now we know this is kind of a prolonged thing, is, does there need to be something set up separate or those notifications that no longer can take place because Code Red's not up yet?
Yeah, that's a a good idea going into winter, cause I know they used that last year for the storms.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So.
I sh- I thought that was gonna be taken care of by them, so. I hope so, but but I guess that was an assumption, so we're gonna have James update us.
Okay. Oh, and then just remembering, um, if we wanna get a list of things together um for Representative Brevis is coming on December sixteenth, so I'll add that to the I'm sorry, I'm there. Okay. Right, so you guys got anything else?
I could.
All right, well, we have a couple hours, but uh I've looked for a motion to adjourn into workshop. Um, and the one scheduled is at one o'clock, HR Partners is coming for an HR workshop.
Are we going to stay here for the full two hours or do we wanna?
We can go.
I mean, I mean, is that? Uh, okay, I I just
Yeah.
wanna make sure that it's not restricted, it's two hours is quite a while. Do a little bit of business.
Can they leave and come back for a workshop?
They could.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Some of, yeah, second.
Move to second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero.